Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Redlands Planning Commission meeting for September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five. We have a quorum present. Are there any public comments on matters not on today's agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to item number two, presentations. We have none. Item number three, consent calendar, meeting minutes of August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five. Are there any questions or comments about the minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I approve, uh, motion to approve this, uh, consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number four, old business, we have none. Moving on to item number five, new business, five A. Item five A is a request for a revision to the approved commission review and approval number nine sixty-eight. A proposal to modify the approved parking lot layout and related improvements and proposal to change one architectural siding material located at two forty-five Terracina Boulevard. Has any commissioner had any expertise communications with the applicant regarding this item? Okay. Seeing none, staff presentation by Jasmine Serrato, Ms. Serrato.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the commission. CRA nine sixty-eight, revision number one. The applicant, Redlands Community Hospital, is requesting a revision to CRA number nine sixty-eight to modify the previously approved parking configuration, change one material for the exterior architectural finish, and allow the use of off-site parking facilities. Here is an updated aerial where we can see the project has begun construction with approved building permits for the building itself. The subject property is located in the office land use designation of the general plan, which allows medical office uses. The proposed revisions do not conflict with the previous approval for the construction of a new medical office building, and the project remains consistent with the general plan land use designation. Similarly, the project site is located within the medical facility district and permits medical office types of uses by right. The project with proposed revisions will continue to comply with all applicable development standards for the MF district. The previously approved CRA for the new building indicated significant revisions to the parking area here in blue, which included removal and replacement of most of the site's existing paved space and established landscaping around the parking areas. However, this proposed revision would limit the overall site disturbance to the area immediately surrounding the new building. Sorry, in the northeast corner of the site. And preserve, preserve much of the existing established landscaped areas. There are no proposed changes to the full plan. The approved building operates similarly to a hospital by providing cancer treatment on a scheduled basis. Due to the operational characteristics, we applied the hospital parking ratio for the new proposed building at a rate of one space per patient bed plus one space for every employee. There are a total of six patient beds and seven employees expected per the larger shift, which requires thirteen spaces. In addition, the existing medical office building requires two hundred and forty-one parking spaces, which leads to a total amount of two hundred and fifty-four spaces required. Two hundred and thirty are expected to be provided onsite, and twenty-four spaces mainly for staff will be provided off-site at two oh four Terracina Boulevard if approved. Redlands Municipal Code, section eighteen point one six four point two five zero, allows the planning commission to approve off-site parking in a substitute location, provided that the requested location is within two hundred feet of the principal use for which parking is being provided and in the same possession as the use it is intended to serve. The applicant's request meets these criteria as the off-site parking is located approximately a hundred and seventy-seven feet west of the project site and is under the same ownership as the medical office building currently under construction. I also wanted to note that the applicant did provide a parking calculation indicating that the Redlands Community Hospital does have a surplus of a hundred and eighty parking spaces. The project is required to landscape a minimum of seven percent or nine thousand one hundred and fifty square feet of the parking area, and the proposed revision retains existing landscaping in place and provides additional landscaping surrounding the new building for a total of fifteen thousand ninety square feet of landscaping, which exceeds the requirement. During the plan check process for the approved building, the applicant proposed a change to one exterior building material from a phenolic panel system with a wood finish appearance to an exterior insulation finishing system in a copper color, which appears to be similar in exterior appearance. Overall, a very small percentage of the exterior facade would be affected, and the color is similar between the two materials. Can kind of see it here. These are the north and west, east, west and east. The original findings required for the approval of a CRA remain applicable to the project, and the requested changes to the parking lot design do not change the project to such an extent that new findings are necessary. The proposed project also continues to meet the listed criteria to qualify for exemption from environmental review pursuant to section one five three three two for infill development projects of the SECO guidelines. Staff recommends the planning commission adopt resolution number seventeen twenty to approve CRA nine sixty-eight revision one based on the analysis and findings in the staff report and subject to the attached conditions of approval. If deemed appropriate, staff has provided the motion on screen, and we do have the architect present for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for staff at this time? Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Okay. Seeing none. I will say we did not open a public hearing. Is this a public hearing?
No, this was not necessary to be noticed or held as a public hearing. Of course, you're always welcome to accept public comments.
Yes.
And I don't know if the applicant has their own presentation or remarks that they'd like to make, but we can certainly invite them up.
The applicant like to join us, or are you just here for questions? Perfect.
Just to confirm again, I believe it's seven staff people that work during the day. Is that the one shift? Is, is that what it is?
Oh, you gotta come up. Sorry. And if you could please introduce yourself.
Yeah, my name is Guy Jimenez. I'm with CA Architects.
And what did I, let's see. So twenty-four parking spaces are going to be across the street?
Across the street.
And then there's that sidewalk that's lit. Is that correct?
Excuse me.
Is there a sidewalk that kind of blinks with the blinking lights when pedestrians are crossing?
Yes, right, the crosswalk there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, Commissioner Elliott.
For the, the change in material for the siding, it's kind of hard to tell from the pictures, but what is the finish of the new material? Like, is it as matte or as shiny as the material that it's replacing?
It is, uh, it's a special, um, Ephesus finish that represents like a metal panel. So it does have a higher gloss than the rest of the material that's more like a stucco.
Okay, and then is, and so that's similar to that, like, wood, like faux wood?
It does not have a wood texture to it. It's more like a metal panel as opposed to wood. The first one was, the phenolic panel has a wood grain very lightly in it, but it's hardly, it's not deep grain. The Ephesus option is very rustic. It looks like weathered wood, and it wouldn't be appropriate for the...
Sure. I think I was just trying to get a sense of, like, light reflection off the material, if it was shiny or matte.
Well, both, both the phenolic and the, that's why we kind of went with this, is both of a higher gloss and a little more reflective.
Sure. And what was the reason for changing to the different material?
It was brought up during the bidding process that it would be significantly cheaper if we didn't change materials, if we went with the Ephesus throughout the whole building.
Okay, so it's just continuing the, just different color on the rest of the building.
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if someone would like to...
I move the planning commission adopt resolution number seventeen twenty and approve commission review and approval number nine sixty-eight. Revision number one, based on the findings of the staff report and subject to the attached conditions of approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved by Commissioner Stanson and seconded by Commissioner Wells to approve revision number one for commission review and approval number nine sixty-eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item number five B. Item five B is a request for approval of a minor commission approval to reduce the required front yard setback for a hillside lot as permitted by the Redlands Municipal Code for residential property located at one thirty Sierra Vista Drive. Has any commissioner had any expertise communications with the applicant on this item? Seeing none, staff presentation by Jasmine Serrato. Ms. Serrato, welcome back.
Thank you. The applicant, Brian McKernan, is seeking planning commission approval to apply the provisions of Redlands Municipal Code, section eighteen point one five two point zero twenty, also known as the hillside lot exceptions at one thirty Sierra Vista Drive. Approval of the exception would allow the construction of a small detached garage shown here, approximately two hundred and seventeen square feet within the twenty-five-foot front yard setback. The applicant has obtained building permits to construct a new single-family home at this location, which is currently under construction, and is now requesting to apply the hillside lot exception section to allow for the construction of a garage accessory structure for the new home. The proposed garage would be constructed with a minimum setback of seven feet and three inches on the Escondido Drive side of the property, approximately a hundred and thirty-five feet south of Sierra Vista Drive. The hillside lot exception section allows for the planning commission to consider and approve a garage to be built in the front yard area if the hillside property has an uphill or downhill slope greater than twenty-five percent. The subject site has an upward slope of forty-five percent adjacent to Escondido Drive and therefore meets the criteria to request the exception. Here we have a section which shows the uphill slope of forty-five percent, which is consistent across the front yard areas of the property. The proposed garage will be a custom structure with architectural features similar to the new home currently under construction. The elevation shown here will include a roll-up garage door and a pedestrian door in the south-facing elevation, tan, smooth stucco walls, exposed rafter tails, and a charcoal-colored asphalt shingle roof. The proposal qualifies for exemption from environmental review in accordance with SECO guidelines, section one five three zero three E, which applies to garages, carports, patios, swimming pools, and fences. Again, the project is the construction of a small garage structure within the front yard setback. If staff recommends the planning commission adopt resolution number seventeen twenty-one and approve minor commission review number fifty-three, subject to the attached conditions of approval. If deemed appropriate, staff has provided the following motion on screen, and the applicant is present for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff at this time? Would the applicant like to make a presentation, or are you just here for questions? Does, does anyone have any questions for the applicant? I will tell you, I sold the house next door, so for you to be able to build a house there, kudos to you, because that had to have been a very, very difficult thing to do up there. Yeah, I, I, I believe you. Okay, so if anyone has any further questions, otherwise if someone would like to make a motion, go right ahead.
I move to adopt resolution number one seven two one for minor commission review number fifty-three to allow a reduced front yard setback in accordance with Redlands Municipal Code, section eighteen point one five two point zero two zero B.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved by Commissioner Wells and seconded by Commissioner Elliott to approve minor commission approval number fifty-three. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck. Okay. Moving on to item number five C. Five C is a brief update on major development projects recently completed or currently under construction in Redlands and the status of major development applications currently being processed. Staff presentation by Brian Foot, Mr. Foot.
All right, thank you. We are moving right along, so I have a somewhat brief presentation for you all on the status of some current development projects under construction in Redlands and, and then later on, a few of the major development applications we have under review at this time. So I just randomly selected a few of the, the major projects that are under construction or recently been completed, so we will start with those. So in the downtown area, around the train depot, as you know, there have been a number of projects approved and constructed recently. The arrows indicate the three most recent ones, and that is essentially the, what is the new Citibank building, the, the former, I think it was a FedEx Kinko's Office Copy Center. It's been converted to a Citibank, and that Citibank was relocated from the, the big tower downtown on State Street. And then also the formerly known as the Mod Packing House, Mutual Orange Distributors Packing House, now renamed the Redlands Public Market. And then a couple of newer restaurant retail buildings just to the west of the depot. So we will start with the, the Mod Packing House. This is the old picture of the previous building. Had been vacant for quite some time. That was also a designated historical building. And a few historical photos showing the somewhat typical packing house activities for mostly citrus. And some, just some photos here of the exterior and the interior. And then the new and improved version of the, the packing house, now Redlands Public Market. This view is from the northwest corner of the building, which is at the intersection of Third Street and Al Harris Lane. So this is the, the south side of the depot, and then also next to the, the Look Theater, and you're looking to the southeast at the corner of the property there. Then, as you can see, there's the new, the boardwalk that was constructed on the, the west side, and then also the north side along the street frontages for some additional outdoor seating area. This is the west facade, so this is along Third Street. This is looking east towards the building, so this is the, the west side, west facade of the building, and as you can see, the, the boardwalk there, and then the, the large overhanging awning for shade. And all new, essentially an all-new building. It was seismically retrofitted, seismically strengthened in the basement, as well as the upper floor. And then all-new glass storefronts along this side of the building. And for all intents and purposes, a, a new roof, or almost new roof, retrofitted, seismically strengthened, new materials and so forth, so quite, quite a bit of work on the interior and exterior of this building. And this is the north facade, the Al Harris Street side, so this is directly across the street from the depot. And again, you can see the boardwalk constructed there, and then some new glass doors. The openings were previously existing, from what I understand, but the glass doors are all new, sort of a, you know, modern aesthetic. And then some of the historical elements were, were reintroduced, such as the, the goose neck lighting. It's sort of a typical historical type of light, so they retain certain historical features and characteristics of the property while mixing in some new, new design features as well. And then this is the view of the patio. This is the interior east side of the building, so this is the, the rear patio area. And there was quite an extensive reuse of historical materials. The, the developer, Jerry Tessier, had really gone, gone all over Southern California looking for relevant historical features and elements, and and what you're seeing here is repurposed train trusses. And they've hung these enormous fifteen, eighteen-foot gates on these train trellises, just again to, to retain some of the historical materials and historical look to some of these design elements. And then, of course, all-new DG on the ground mixed in with some brick pavers in certain areas, and then also new concrete and concrete steps in certain areas. This is a little bit closer view of the patio. Essentially all-new landscape areas and seating areas and, and so forth. And then there's other, again, certain design features that aren't very apparent here, but they've included some things like old sponge pots that have been converted to planters, for example, just to retain some of that, that historical character of the citrus industry on this particular property. And some interior photos, the, the grand opening there in the upper right, and then an interior photo there on the lower left. I don't know how many bars they have inside. It's got to be, I think, five or six bars. There's four or five on the main floor, and then there's a, a so-called secret speakeasy in the, in the basement that is interesting, interesting little area. Then, of course, about a dozen or more different types of restaurants in addition to the bars and whatnot. If you've not been on the inside yet, I would encourage you to, when you have time, take some time and, and do a little walk-through and you'll, you'll be no doubt impressed by some of the little features. They've, they've repurposed various steel elements, for instance, machinery that had been used in an old packing house, like chains and, and various metal elements. They've, they've reconstructed and made chandeliers out of some of these things, and so there's various types of chandeliers and planters and, and hanging features all over the place that are, are, as a whole, it's, it's, it's pretty impressive what they've done with the building. Again, this is the main dining area in the, in the central middle part of the building on the main floor. And then up above, you can see in the, in the in the, the roof framing, some of the things that they've done, introduced some hanging plants and all types of different lighting and, and just interesting little design features everywhere you look. On the right-hand side there, this is interesting. This is a converted freight elevator. They've converted it into like a pop-up space where they can have various vendors come in for a week. Could be artists, could be local retail stores, could be arts and crafts, but it was, it's been repurposed as a sort of a pop-up space. And let's see, that's, and then on the left there is a, a view of the patio again. Quite a popular area. And moving on to Citibank, it's been recently completed and opened, so essentially an all-new facade, all, on all sides, as well as the interior, of course. Large glass storefront. The actual entrance is around the, the back of the building towards the interior parking lot. And then the previous FedEx Kinko's store just moved over to the, into the new brick building right next door. So they have a new space as well, and they're, they're, seem to be pleased with that. And then this is a side elevation facing Al Harris Lane. There's a mural, as you can see there, on the main facade. And obviously, the, the sort of architectural theme ties into the, what you would call a modern interpretation of a packing house. It has some brick elements and then stamped steel, and then various roofing styles to sort of blend in with the surrounding development. Okay, next is the, the Bergamot specific plan. I believe it's now called, or it's marketed as Live Oak by, I think it's Meritage Homes. There, so that's mostly completed, the upper portion north of Citrus Valley High School. And then a phase-two track two oh five two eight was approved subsequent to the main Bergamot specific plan. And then also, there's another smaller track to the east, two oh five two oh. It's also beginning construction, but focusing on the Bergamot specific plan, it's, it's probably about eighty percent complete. The, on the screen there, the shaded yellow areas appear to be under, not yet under construction, but everything else appears to be mostly complete, including the open space areas, the, the mini parks on the interior, some of the trail systems, the streets, the utilities, the improvements. Everything is, appears to be pretty much completed except for a few of these interior areas. This is a sample of a typical street. The homes are quite large, two stories, and they're, they're arranged well along the street frontages, as you can see there. These would be the, the single-family product. And then these would be the, what they refer to as the, the motor courts or the courtyard homes, a little bit smaller, a little bit more compact, shared driveways and so forth. A little bit higher density. I think these, these ended up being about a medium-density product compared to the, the detached single-family is a little bit lower density. And then there's the, the new twelve-acre park. It seems to be mostly complete. It's fenced off, not yet publicly accessible, but I would anticipate that that's probably going to be handed over to the city soon if it hasn't already, but the improvement seemed to be mostly complete. So this is a view looking, this is looking southwest, and obviously, this is the, the baseball field, one of the baseball fields. And then this view is from the parking lot on Domestic Avenue looking north, so quite a, quite a large area, twelve acres, and then, of course, the, the view is spectacular. It gives you a sense of the sort of a spaciousness with the, the mountains in the background, and then the, the valley view. Okay, next is the, what we call the Liberty Lane Apartments. This is a, I believe it's still funded and operated by the County Housing Authority. So this was a project with eighty apartments for low-income families, veterans, and others in the county's housing program, and then one onsite manager. And this also appears to be mostly complete. Most of all, the buildings are complete, and then they're currently finishing up some of the site improvements and some of the landscaping. This is a typical example of the, the bill, one of the buildings, all the buildings have the same architectural style and materials throughout the project. This is another building, but appears almost identical, so quite a bit of architectural detailing done on these buildings. They're, they're quite nice, and then the, the drought-tolerant landscaping, and then they also have some interior play areas. There's, there's another larger, I'll call it a community garden. It's a private garden, but it's a fairly sizable space right at the corner of the intersection, the southwest corner of Texas and Lagona. Okay, moving on to some of our current major development applications. One we have coming soon to the commission would be a, a new hotel project. And it's four stories. It's fairly typical. It's about eighty, eighty-eight rooms, I believe it was. And then this location is immediately behind the new In-N-Out on Lagona Avenue. There's sort of a, a large vacant lot at the interchange, the northwest corner of the interchange. Behind In-N-Out, there used to be a large radio tower at that, at that parcel. It's now been removed, and so it's, it's essentially a vacant parcel sitting there. And lo and behold, we got a developer wanting to build a hotel there. So that will probably be coming to the commission in, in a few months here. Next, we have a proposed shopping center, and this is the north east corner of Lagona and Tennessee. So if you're familiar with the, the Home Depot Shopping Center on Lagona, this is immediately across the street to the north. And then we've recently approved, the council's recently approved a couple of housing projects immediately adjacent to this particular site. So on the right-hand side of the screen, which would be to the east, was the Lagona Village Project, and that was a mix of single-family and multifamily and townhomes. And then to the north, which would be to the top of this slide, the top parcel to the north of this, was the Tennessee Village, mixed-use project, and that, I believe, had close to three hundred units plus some ground, ground floor retail spaces. So this being the, the remaining large parcel in the area seems ideal for a shopping center. So the, the major tenant would be a, a grocery of some type, and then a number of outbuildings with shops. with shops and then one, pad one in the upper left is a, intended for a, a restaurant or a coffee shop with a drive-through lane. And then the remainder of the outbuildings, one, two, three, four outbuildings would be multi-tenants for a variety of shops and restaurants and so on. So that one will be a little bit longer before it comes to the commission. It's currently undergoing environmental review, so it'll be probably early, early next year by the time it gets to the commission. Let's see, oh, and some elevations, proposed elevations of the shopping center here. So appears to have somewhat of a, I would characterize this as maybe like a craftsman flavor, a different, different variety of materials consistent with a craftsman style. Although I'm not sure about the metal awnings, I don't think that's a craftsman style, but some other elements are craftsman. Let's see, next, oh yes, what's called the, what the applicant is calling the Pioneer Park specific plan, this is a recent submittal. So as you know, the, the area around Citrus Valley High School has been developing with, with residential for a number of years now. Started with specific plan sixty-two, the heritage specific plan several years ago. That's now been completed for at least two years now. And then, of course, the Bergamot specific plan is under construction to the north and west of the Citrus Valley High School and then a few other residential tracks that have been approved or starting construction in the area as well. So this Pioneer Park specific plan seems to be the, maybe not the last, but one of the last large pieces in that area that are converting from what was historically viewed as maybe an industrial, light industrial or commercial area. It's now converting to residential and of course, the, of course, the presence of the high school is driving much of that. So this particular project has, it's over two hundred units, it's, I think it's closer to, almost three hundred units in total. And this is more of a medium-density product and project. I don't want to dive into too much detail here, but it would involve relocating the current Tennessee street, relocating that street a little bit further to the east so that it better aligns with the entrance to the high school. And that street is shown on the, the right-hand side of the slide here. And then these neighborhoods, the various shades are indicating various densities of housing products, so some low, lower, medium-density plus some medium-density and then a variety of, of styles, so a single-family detached as well as some attached townhome-type product and then also some motor court-type products. Probably not too different from the, what the, we see at the Bergamot specific plan right now. Let's see, next we have an application from Kaiser to expand their medical office building property on California Street. So this is a multi-phase project. Over many, many years, they're anticipating a fifteen-to-twenty-year, if not more, build-out over four phases. Include two new medical office buildings plus a hospital tower, I believe it's up to seven stories. And so this is the site plan and this is the overall site plan, so this shows several new buildings, but I'll, I'll walk you through the phases here on the following slides. So there's an existing office building, that's the gray shaded structure there in the middle with a parking lot. And then the first phase would be a new medical office building slash ambulatory surgery center, so outpatient procedures, for example, in and out in one day. And then a new parking lot for that, for that building, so that's phase one. And then phase two would be the hospital itself plus detached parking structure as well as a central utility plant, support building, and then related surface parking lots and related improvements on all sides. That's phase two. And then phase three would be a third medical office building that's indicated in blue there. And then lastly, phase four, if there is a phase four, would be an expansion of the hospital, they'd be adding a new wing to the hospital, probably to connect to the parking structure. But that's, that's our impression, that's more of like an optional phase for, for Kaiser, but right now we're, we are completing an administrative draft, EIR, Environmental Impact Report for that project and we're hoping to get that document circulated for public review soon, October would be nice. We're, we're finalizing some things, so our goal is to get that out soon, hopefully by October, no later than November. And then the goal is to have this project before the commission in the first quarter of next year sometime. Let's see, and that's about all I have. We have a more detailed list of all our current applications on our website. It's citivredeles.org/post/currentprojects and so we have that and much more information on our Planning Division webpage.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Foot? I will say, with the Redlands market, I was very impressed with how they were able to do the AC. I went in there when it was really hot and I was terrified, I didn't want to do it. It was really cool. It was not terribly hot in there, I was impressed. Okay, moving on to, oh, you know what? We, yes, that concludes five C. Number six, announcement and commissioner comments, do we have any? Seeing none, director's update, which really you just did. Do you have anything else to share?
Uh, just briefly, yes. Uh, next meeting, we are anticipating to be October fourteenth. And we have a number of items in queue for that. I believe it's four applications of different types, plus we want to bring our draft, AD ordinance, accessory dwelling unit ordinance, to the commission for a formal review and recommendation, hopefully. And of course, if you, you're interested in the draft, you can reach out to me individually beforehand and I can, I can, happy to send you what we have so far. And also, what we had wanted to bring to today's meeting initially was the continued discussion of the warehouse ordinance, but that we will bring back to October fourteenth and we're hoping that we will have all seven commissioners, is will everyone be able to attend on the fourteenth, hopefully? Great, okay.
I, I would like to note that I will not be here on October twenty-eighth.
Okay.
So if we have that meeting, I won't be here. Huh?
Yeah, it's a possibility we may cancel the twenty-eighth meeting if we don't have any items, yeah.
I will be here on the fourteenth. Then we will move on to item number eight, adjournment to the October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.